I'll call a meeting to order.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I convene as Walworth County planning and zoning board. Discussion on the Peterson.
We talked about this a couple of meetings ago, this Peterson flat, it was the first flat we did after the new ordinances went into effect in 2017. And the county approved the flat when in fact it was supposed to be the city of Mowbridge because it was in the three mile radius. And it was in their jurisdiction, so we sent it back to them and I just got this back the other day. Because they can't do it. They, we have to send it to the city of Mowbridge, planning and zoning first. Because they gotta redo all the signatures because it was signed twice or something. I just wanted to let you know that, so that's gonna be a hundred and fifty dollar fee for us and then maybe some other fees, we have to do, redo the Myler pages and all that stuff. Give you a heads up on that. That is just a something that, like I said, is the first flat we did, so it was a little confusion there. Just wanted to let you know. Any questions?
So there's nothing been done with this? I mean, their city of Mowbridge.
We say send it back to us, they have to just go through the steps of going through their planning and zoning first, just like we would do and then then to this city council. It's just a question of getting the signatures, it'll probably take a while because like the owner, Mr. Peterson or Mrs. Peterson, they moved to Colorado, so it's just the time it takes to get it mailed back and forth. So it's just a process, it's, it'll get done, it'll just take some time.
Anybody have any questions? Thanks, great. Any old business? New business? Hear none, I take a motion. I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Oh, second.
Got a second, any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Convene as Walworth County Board of Zoning Adjustment. Is there any old business? New business? They got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
A second, any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Convene as the Board of County Commissioners. Approval of the agenda. I'll need a motion to add on, under the jail. For motion to approve certification wage increase of fifty, fifty cents per hour. It's for Tracy Berg, so I need that added on the name. Need a motion for that?
I don't.
They got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second that.
You got a, you got a second? Any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed.
Maybe add 319 on there.
It's on there, isn't it? Yeah, we need a motion to add, uh, road 319 on there.
I'm gonna listen to put 319 on there to pay sharp.
That's a difference.
Oh.
Just 319.
Just 319, man.
They got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second, any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion passed. Okay, I need a motion to pay the remainder of sharp. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Is there anybody that either wanted to speak, public forum?
I signed up over there.
Yeah, there's a, we do have a sign up.
I'd like to add on there an executive session for personnel. On the agenda.
I thought they signed up over there, I'm sorry.
They got a motion on the floor, I need a second for executive session.
I'll second that.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Where did you want it, Jim?
I had old business. I guess it doesn't make any difference to me.
Any other discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed.
I make a motion. Approval of the amended agenda.
They got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second, any more discussion? Jim, I thought you had one other thing you were going on.
Eva had that on here.
Okay.
The interest on the landfill.
Okay.
On the, on the new one she put out.
Any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Now I take a motion for the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
We did that. We just did that.
Public forum there. Is there anybody who has anything to say?
I, I just signed up my, which year.
Okay. Pardon? Oh, he's asking, does anyone wanna come up to for the public forum?
I guess, um, I was gonna ask about, um, or not ask about, but talk about a county commission assistant. Because, um, above everything else that Linda Beeman had in her article, which I thought was a very good article. I don't know if the public is aware of the fact that the county commissioners are covered health insurance for the full year and approximately over ten thousand dollars a year per commissioner. And they are also insured with a life insurance policy. So I guess what I feel is, um, that's just one of the many reasons I don't feel that commissioners need a, an assistant. You know, they know when they run for the job, what it consists of, and so I don't think it's cost effective. Thank you.
Anybody else? Just Jim.
I just wanted to, um, uh, I kinda went a little overboard on the hospital last week and I met with the administrator afterwards and I just wanted to specifically apologize to Renee Tisdale. She came in and was basically ambushed by me on something she didn't know about, so I just wanted to make sure that I took care of that and then when I spoke with the hospital administrator, I think when I said that the state's attorney's office and the hospital have a bad relationship, I think that a lot of people got concerned about that. Things have been worked out and I didn't mean to, uh, go, I think I went a little bit overboard and I wanted to apologize for that and I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that the state's attorney's office and the hospital have a good relationship and then specifically, I wanted to apologize to Renee because I didn't think that the way I addressed her was very appropriate, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay, we'll pass fifteen, she's not here. Sixteen, consider motion to approve county commission minutes of June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Y'all had a chance to go over them? They got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Got a second, any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Number seventeen, consider motion to approve claims to be paid as presented. Have everybody had a chance to go over those?
I did have one, uh, one thing on there, under the sheriff's office. I go with Eva, there is some jail supplies under entry number twenty-eight that will be moved to the jail side of it instead of the sheriff's side of it, it was for locks and jails, so they will make a change, but they didn't have time to do it before this meeting.
Anything else?
Josh.
Yes, Josh. I double-checked on that, on that item, I apologize, Kevin, I misspoke, that was for sheriff's office. They bought some materials from building a, a case for me downstairs, I didn't realize and purchase those, so that is under sheriff's office, so it is correct.
Oh.
So, I apologize.
Okay.
He does cart and rework and, and our door locks, so I was thinking.
We just need to change that to sheriff's supplies instead of jail supplies.
Yes, we'll change the wording.
Now I take a motion? They got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Second.
Got a second, any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Josh.
Good morning. Okay, first item on there is the jail discussion was put on for this, for today's date. I see Scott, you got some stuff back.
This morning.
Okay, yeah, um, and that's fine. Eva said that they just got it late last night and was able to get to it today, so that's, it's understandable. I guess the discussion is, you know, do we try and do something with our current, what do, I mean, what, what are, what are the intentions of the board? Kinda laid out a plan and gave it to you, um, the last commission meeting. I didn't resupply that to you because the numbers haven't changed, I did add something but, um, to it, but that's down the line if we choose to do maintenance and stuff, but I listed the three main things on there, which was roof replacement, fire, fire escape issue and, and windows. Now we have this plan, I'll let Scott address that issue.
Well, what it is, I've been talking on the phone with a guy from a company out of Minneapolis. He, uh, Josh and I had put a design together, but he kinda ballooned it, wouldn't he say, Josh?
This is, yeah, um.
He, uh, he made it smaller from the last time, but he said like seven thousand square. But he didn't shrink the price. He shrunk the building, but I guess you guys got it all in front of ya. Pretty much. Self-explanatory, I guess. Josh and I, when our first, uh, that we, the sketch we made was actually this whole first, where the cells are at, that's what Josh and I had brought up. And then he added that to the west and then he made the building quite a bit bigger. When I first talked with him, he thought that, that he could get it probably in our price range, but that's not really happening, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
What's the, what's the price that he put on this, Scott?
Between seven and seven and a half. I talked to him again yesterday and when he told me what the price is, I don't know why they don't put the price on, but that's what it is. So what is the commission thinking about, like I said, it's it's quite a bit bigger than what I initially thought that he was gonna do. Don't want all you guys talking at once.
Okay, I guess I, I'll get started. We spent sixty thousand dollars last year to find out that we cannot use the building that we currently have. Because of all these issues, uh, safety, safety to the employees, liability issues and everything else. Now all of a sudden, we're talking about making the changes to this building. Are we just gonna discount the sixty thousand that we've already spent to say there's no way you can even use this building? I'm not opposed to building a new jail. I'll be the first one to admit, I am not opposed to building a new jail. I don't think we should be doing anything to the current facility that we got. I think before we build a new jail, there's a lot of things that we need to consider. One, it was an overwhelming response from the vote to take care of our own people. Not to house BIA, not to house US Marshals, not to house out of county. Now you come up with this idea of getting these other ones to commit. Unless I see something in writing and a contract to show that they are gonna commit, they commit seriously, I'm with the people of Walworth County where we take care of our own. We don't need a forty-eight bed facility. We can make it to, to fit our needs, but I don't think that we should spend any money, putting any more money in the facility we have now. My opinion is, we temporarily close this facility until we can come up with a plan and an operational plan to get the money back into where it should be to operate it also. Because right now, we're spending one point one million on the operational budget of the current facility. We can house them out for less than six hundred thousand. It's a half million savings that we would be getting. So, my, my opinion is, we do not put any money into this old jail because we've already spent sixty thousand to have the people tell us, there's no way you can, you should be using that facility.
Weren't most of those issues corrected? Liability issues?
Liability and operations, yes. Building, no. I mean, we've changed some doors and added security to it, um, on how the, the building is secured. We've added a couple doors as far as to contain, for containment of the movement of inmates. But as far as the structure, no.
So there's a big liability with the construction of the building?
The thing with the, the structure of the liability, it, it controls the issue on how I can segregate and classify inmates. It, it minimize that extremely to where I can't, I, I can't do much with my inmates. I mean, general population is general population, it's day, it's a, it's a day room setup. So, um, I took the two lockdowns, turned them into drunk tanks, cause I'm, I only have one. And there's times I need six or eight of them. I'm using the inmate side to DT somebody, uh, the inmate side of visitation to DT somebody. Cause that's a secure room.
So the old part should not be used, is that what you're saying, or it can be used?
Well, as far as we're using it now, we did, we made the changes that we can to it. I mean, everybody was concerned with time, we're out, we're, we've been talking about putting a plan together. Yes, the building needs to be changed. But, like I said, it's up to this board what they wanna do. I mean, we, the, if the roof is fixed right now, I mean, the Norcell block I can't use because it leaks like a sieve in there every time it rains and it has been now, I mean, it deteriorated more, there's more sheet rock and stuff hanging down. I mean.
And that can be fixed?
Yes, I mean, it's, you know, late, you know, probably, hopefully in September. But, that's to get us by, I mean, there hasn't been maintenance done on these, on these buildings. The courthouse included. We can't just stop doing maintenance.
But they did.
They did.
So if we put maintenance in the room now, it would not work?
Well, we would be able to put a plan together and hopefully, if we can have revenue come back and take that burden off taxpayers, we, we'll have a good dollar amount there that we could put back in and actually do something.
And get rid of the liability.
We're always gonna have liability. Liability's gonna be there one, I mean, all the time.
That's right.
But, we can diminish that, we can reduce it to the best that we can.
I'm for maintaining it, for using them and getting the prisoners back in here, get some money rolling and make sense to me.
I mean, if we, if we did go to a new facility, I mean, do we wanna put that on the backs, one hundred percent on the backs of it, of the taxpayers too? I don't want, I don't wanna do that. I mean, we've been doing it twenty plus years and had that revenue coming in, so I mean, I just, I think it's foolish to turn that away. To date, I'm not sure which commissioner asked this, but I got this from Nyla because I don't, that all the inmate stuff is ran through the treasurer's office now. Three to four of those items at the top, you know, might have been from, uh, well, it could have been from two thousand eighteen, that January, but just out of county because we stopped, I mean, there's some US here, but we hold very little for them. It's a couple days here and there, um, but sixty-three thousand so far for the year. To date, up to, um, six twenty-five, two thousand nineteen. Sixty-three, six ninety. And I can pass that around if you guys wanna see it, that's from Nyla's office, treasurer's office. I didn't make copies, I can, and just email them out to you guys, if you guys wanna see that number, make a copy before you guys leave. You know, negotiations with the, with the US Marshals, that hasn't stopped, we're still in that process, we've been emailing, but that's not a fast process. Our last email was, from the supervising agent in the area, for the area, sorry, was, they asked for their input on it and how much they would use, use the facility. What's the importance of the facility? He rated it very high, so, um, for usage, how, as far as how important it is to them. So now we're waiting to hear back from, we're just in that waiting period. But I understand the predicament here. I, but we've, I mean, we, and I said we, cause I'm part of that, yes, I bring it to you, but these ain't, this isn't very, uh, they're not easy decisions. Cause it's, if you're thinking about putting new in, yes, I know why, I totally get that aspect of it, I do. But to put a plan together to get us down the road, to put some money back in the coffers, cause right now, we're not turning any revenue. Sixty-three thousand, yes, it's revenue, but, you know, and I, I know where my budget is. I know where that, I'm where my budget is, so, um, I guess, that's my two cents.
Basically, we're right back where we started last fall. That's about the same cost as what the new jail that EAPC designed for us without the additional parking in the front and the additional courthouse security and all that stuff, so in my mind, if we're gonna do something, I think we need to maintain our jail until we get a new one built.
And I would have to look back to make sure, but I think that was between five point four, five point eight is what EAPC did, the last one, and their, um, their reduced version from the ten and a half million.
Without the courthouse security and, and that stuff, so.
Correct, that was, that was jail only.
Well, I just, I'm looking at the numbers here, when you look at the one point one million dollars of operation costs and, right now, realizing we're half a year, we're at sixty-three thousand dollars of, of revenue, if we, if we look back in the years previous, we had two years where we had pretty high incomes, where we really jammed the jail that we currently have quite full, maybe a little overfull. One year in twenty sixteen, we had four hundred ninety-three thousand dollars of income, in twenty seventeen, we had six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of income. I would guess those two years, we were like really, really overfull liability probably through the roof type deal because of the situations we were sitting in. If we go back and look at every other year, twenty thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, uh, and eighteen, the revenue that we generated was a hundred and seventy-two, sixty-four thousand fourteen, a hundred and eighty-four and fifteen and two hundred and thou, two hundred and eight thousand and eighteen. So if I take those numbers just as an average and looking at that, we're looking at about a two hundred thousand dollar revenue generation potential. The most income that we could generate in this deal, with the, with the bed size we've got, we're looking at, I think comfortably, I would say three hundred thousand. That leaves us a, a net operating cost of eight hundred thousand dollars a year with our current budget. If we can, if we can transport our inmates out of here for a half a million dollars or six hundred thousand dollars, that's still saving the county two hundred thousand dollars a year. I'm, I'm guessing my, my, here's my best case scenario that I feel like that I think, I feel like we need a, we need a holding cell, we need a drunk tank. And I know that this isn't a city of Mowbridge issue or anything like that, but to me, the city of Mowbridge is the one that needs to get that area taken care of. Because ninety-five percent of our inmates are there. If we put up a jail, and I have, I'm, I'm like Kevin, I have no problem putting up a new jail. But we need to get our operating costs, I know at one point in time, and I don't remember which meeting it was or anything like that, the whole fact of putting up a new jail was the, the fact of being way more, uh, efficient and having the ability to operate that jail with less personnel. To me, if we can get these other counties, if you've got counties that are willing to contribute, I, I'm all for it, just like Kevin, get a contract. But to me, those counties that are, that are sitting there begging us to keep this thing open, they need to put some meat in the game. Put, put a half a million dollars each one of those counties into building this building. Put five hundred, put fifty thousand dollars a year and every year to operate the thing. Guess what? We, now all of a sudden, we're looking at a two to three million dollar cost of Walworth County and an operating cost that gets back down to where we can, where it's more reasonable. Why is it Walworth County's responsibility to take care and put up a facility for everybody else? My, my whole thing with this is, if we're, if we're going to take operating this thing and it's gonna cost us two to three hundred thousand dollars more to operate it than it would be to ship our inmates out of here, why are we doing it? why are we doing it?
Are those figures on eight prisoners, isn't it?
What's that?
Your figures that you had last time were for eight prisoners?
For the cost of housing?
Yeah, for gone to Falk.
They were figured, that was figured on 10. 11, 11, excuse me, 11 inmates. Yeah, we had 11 inmates, we didn't have, cause that was what our average was, between 10 to 11.
I truthfully thought that I, uh, that where the guy talked Minneapolis, that we could get it a lot rea- more reasonable. Unless we have other counties that are willing to help, I don't know how, how Walworth County can do this themselves. Not that much money.
Why couldn't we get the maintenance that all these and, and do get some income while we're figuring where we're gonna go and what we're gonna do?
But how much are we gonna stick in that building?
50,000?
Well, the stuff I wanted to do, yeah, I mean, what was that, that figure, 55,000?
But even, so, like that fire escape, we're not supposed to be using the upstairs anyway. Why do we need a fire escape from the upstairs to get out?
I'm trying to make it usable, so I can use it. Fire escape would make it usable.
Not with the current facilities that are upstairs, with the plastic shower stalls and everything else up there. That was one of the issues that was brought up on, on the report that we had.
Well, and, now they're.
The narrowness of that stairwell going up there, the steepness of it, that was all part of that liability issue.
I guess where does?
Now we're just gonna throw that out.
Well, I need to know where the, where the board sits here, because we're all over the place. At one minute, we're gonna, we're gonna discredit those reports on what the, because you guys absolutely detest the guy that did him, so, at one point, we're gonna dismiss him, but now, we're gonna reflect back on them, and now, I mean, which way do you guys wanna go? Because the public is seeing it two, two separate ways. That's how, that's how this thing got failed out of boat. So, it got discredited to it, because you guys didn't believe in it. You didn't believe in the numbers. Now, you wanna bring that report back in and use it, you know, and, you guys, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to do what's right here and keep, you know, I know I need a jail here, it's unfortunate, or I wouldn't be fighting for it.
I'm saying even EAPC said we're not supposed to be using that facility.
And they also told me we're doing damn good, damn good for the, for the condition of the building, and what we have to work with. That was one of the first things that came out of Lee's mouth. You said you're doing damn good for what you have to work with. And, to tell you the truth, we've done what we can with the building. We, we went through that whole queue, and remember that, Kevin? Everything, we made changes over there, we, we, we did everything to the nail, to the nail. And now it's coming down to the building issues that I can't change, okay? I'm asking for a roof, just so that, I mean, the roof would get us by.
That's gonna get us by, but then he gonna fix the issue.
The other issues? No, it's not. You're right, I'll agree with you. I mean, it's not gonna change the fact that I, it's gonna reduce the, how I can manage my inmates.
You're right.
When it, when I have 28, 30 of them in there. But it's dormitory, that's what, that's what ties my hands, okay? Um, you know, I guess I, I'm a little bit frustrated, but, that's beside the point. We're trying to get a discussion going, so I, I mean, I just put something together there, guys. That's all I did. I mean, it's a plan, it's, I used a number of seven years. I can pass it around if everybody wants to look at it, if it's here, I don't, that's fine. I had it out last time, there's some that didn't get to see it, they're here, but, I, I just, we gotta come together at some point here, and, I guess, closing it, what am I gonna do in the meantime? I don't have enough officers right now.
We had a plan in place to do that.
Yep, and I know, Mowbridge PD is advertising, they've advertised for a spot, they've gotten two applicants in about two months. I can't afford, I got one applicant in, out of two weeks. And I'll tell you right now, I just offered the position out this morning to fill my sheriff's office spot. So, one in two weeks is all I got. And it's one of my jail staff that is with the guards, has, I mean, he's got an impeccable record, I mean, so, that's who, who I went with. Um, it'll be a transfer out of the jail, but, you know, I don't know what you want me to do, but I gotta fix those issues, right, like I said, I can't utilize that whole Norcell block. And my, two of my drunk tanks are in there. So I'm just, I mean, work with me, fellas, work with me, that's all I'm asking. I, it's, I hate putting money into an old building too. I don't know what else to do to get this, this building cost down, we talk about a new building. It's gonna be tough, it's gonna be tough by the time you get all the fixtures and everything that you need, that are supposed to be in a jail facility. It's just not, putting up a building and putting the walls up and having partitions in it, a little bit more to it than that, and we all know that. So, I'm not throwing a dig out there at anybody, but, we have, we have to come together and make a decision on this. That, I, I guess I don't know what else to say.
That's why we need to make it now, cause we got budget coming up. We need to know which way we're gonna go.
I guess, any comments from the other commission? I guess, you know, I, I understand. My big thing, yep, I, I agree, we, we shouldn't take the fall for it, you know, 100%, but we gotta, we gotta fix things, but I don't think it's fair to throw that on the taxpayers either. Take a portion of revenue, put it toward, toward the new building, I don't care, um, secure, secure revenue from the US Marshals, and that revenue goes 100% toward the, toward the facility. I don't care, those are miniscuous things that can be worked out later, on where you wanna move that, those dollars to. But, as far as, you know, I don't know that I'd be able to hire people to even combat that issue. You know, to handle the transports, um, but, that's another thing that we'll have to cover, if the board, shoot, you know, we're back, you know, to the possible closure again. But that's a, if that's a board decision, then it's a board decision. But, then I will have to jump through some hoops and see what I can get done.
Yes, I guess when, um, you talk about putting it back on the taxpayers, I guess that was, that's part of my point with this whole keeping the jail open and running it. I mean, we're, right now, we're, we're throwing a liability on the taxpayer, major liability. We can actually save some tax dollars by actually not having a jail here right now.
Our liability, again, doesn't go anywhere.
I understand the liability, so we're gonna have liability if we transport them, I understand, I mean, you made that one clear, right? That part of it, they, they still are our inmates. My, my, my problem is, is, if we can, if we can transport our inmates, and we can save the county a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, over our expenses and revenue that we are, that we're generating, I, I'm having a hard time, if we can get the operation of this new, if we could put a new facility up, and get the operation cost down to where it's, it's, uh, reasonable, by getting other counties to commit to this thing and put some real dollars to the building part of it, then I think we're crazy not putting it up.
Well, and I'll, I'll reiterate this back to you, Mr. Schloemer. You guys put the, you guys put the plan together, to- together then, because my numbers, I mean, are my numbers. And, you guys obviously, I mean, do not like my numbers.
Well, I, I have no, not, no offense, I have no problem with, I understand your numbers, I understand your numbers, I'm looking at it from the standpoint, if we're not going to use this facility, why do we want to put any dollars in that facility? If we're gonna take and look at potentially putting up a brand new facility and doing that, fine, but let's not spend the money on this thing. Let's get them out of here for now, get this building out of here if we're gonna do that facility, and get ourselves a plan going that direction. But instead of having to spend an extra 60, 70,000 on this facility, just to take and patch it up so we don't have water running in, I would rather see us spend that 60, 70,000 towards a new facility if we're gonna do that.
Well, the roof was only 12,000.
Well, I understand.
55,000 with, with the three.
I understand the three different things there.
Yeah, um, but yes, the roof is, is an issue. So, I guess, and I get that.
I mean, that's, that's my hardest, that's, that's my biggest hangup with that, is, why are we spending good money after bad? If we can take, if we're looking at the possibility of doing a new facility that would, but, like you said, it all hinges back on being able to get the operation cost down. I, to me, if we can get a facility that is streamlined where you can get by with two people on staff, and you can get your operation cost down there, that makes, that makes some sense. But if we're having the same staffing and we're looking at operation costs of 1.1 million dollars, now on top of all of these numbers, we gotta throw a building cost into it. We haven't put any of that number in there. So now, instead of just losing a couple hundred thousand dollars, now we're, now we're, are saving a couple hundred thousand and we're losing big time money. Without having other support from other counties. And I know these other counties don't have the inmates we have, I understand that. But there are counties out there that have as many inmates as we have that don't have a jail also. So how are they doing it? I mean, I got a feeling that if, if, never, in my wildest dream, will I ever dream that a, a jail is ever gonna be a moneymaker.
If, if, if anything possibly break even, um.
And that would be a victory.
Possibly break even, um, y'all, it's, it depends on who you talk to. It could, it can, it's not gonna be a huge moneymaker.
See, and I'm looking at it from the standpoint, when I mentioned the idea of other counties pitching in and doing all that stuff, all of a sudden, our input cost going into this facility would be half.
Well, that would be a break even point.
And, and then all of a sudden, we're getting close to a break even. We're, we're back to the point of, I mean, if we're spending, instead of 1.1 million dollars a year and end up net revenue of, of 200 off that, so we, cost us 800, 900,000 dollars a year, and we can get down to where it's only costing us 300 to 400,000 dollars a year, that's a, that's a huge victory.
What was our US Marshal, what were, you remember what we were billing out? Off the top of your head, approximately, um, before we shut him off?
Yeah, between 10, 10 to 12 a month, maybe, somewhere in there, depending on the number they had here.
BIA was what, 12 to 14,000?
I can't remember, I had, they just had less. I know, something to also think about is, comments we've heard from some of the other counties, if it's shut down, you know, they're obviously gonna go somewhere else, cause they have to. And, maybe to get that money for them to pitch in and do so, some of the comments is, they, they may not come back, cause they're already somewhere else. So, if we do shut them off, we may not get them back, which is gonna be harder to have them pitch in right away as well.
Again, I, I'm, I understand that, but why is that Walworth County's responsibility to build a facility for other counties, in hopes that they're gonna take care of it?
And I agree, but, like I said, if you want them to, if we're looking to have them hopefully pitch in some, some brick and mortar costs and have them pitch in for some, you know, offset the budget, and if we shut it down, they go somewhere else, some of them may not come back, when that, when at that point in time, so you guys.
And we'll be fighting for the same bed space.
Just something to think about, I was telling it out there.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, I don't know where you're at on this, but, uh, I mean, we, we looked at that design.
Yeah, I, like I said, I wholeheartedly thought that he was gonna come through for us. It's, obviously didn't, because he just made everything over what you and I designed, where I thought we could be at a very reasonable figure.
Well, and I think what we need to do is, I don't, you, yes, we gave him a drawing, but it was, does he actually understand what we're trying to do, I mean, you're try, you're,
I think so.
And I, and I believe you're still trying to utilize, that's a, that's a brand new building, right there.
No.
Still got the old building.
Okay, there's, that is attached, okay, I didn't look at it long enough.
The old is still there, it's, that's still there.
So we're still utilizing that, um, well.
No.
No, 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 no.
The addition.
New, old.
Night, the 99 edition, correct.
But I, I don't know how we can keep sticking a bunch of money in that place either, though. It's just, we're, we're wasting money. I mean, if we go 60, just say the 60,000, I mean.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Yes, Jim. In my mind, I think we gotta fix the roof. We're not gonna shut it down anyway, because we need the holding cells and the drunk tanks for the inmates we pick up, so if we're gonna staff it for those people, we just won't staff it for all, all our inmates. We just as well fix the roof and we're, no matter what we do, we're two to three years down the road, we will more than make up the price of that roof and what we saved going out of county. These guys say 600,000, Josh says 110,000, Brad said 90, what, 3 or 4 or 5,000, house out of county. I think, I believe the experts' number is more than, than the 600,000. We're not gonna save any money going out of county, if we can find the bids.
The, the first two items, um, Mr. Chairman, are, are 31, 700. You know, window replacement, yeah, they're shot. The, the needs right now are the first two things on my list. Are the needs, so, like I said, what it, we can put whatever plan this board wants to put together. Um, even seven years down the road, I mean, you, you, you build a, we're still, we're still in the courthouse, we, we've had to do some things in here. And I'm sure there's still plans to do things in here.
But how are we, we've got more staff than Falk, and how, how can we cut that down then? We've got more staff on, on duty than, than Falk County does, correct?
And that was one of, one of the suggestions that came from the feasibility study, and when Brad was here. That, that was part of that Q and A plan, because of how the, how the system is, or how the jail is built and set up. Cameras are great, you still gotta have inmate supervision. That's a, you know, that's a brand new facility. It's set up different. Is possibly a way, but, as far as, you know, you have something in that jail, we go down to two. If we, you know, we go down to two, one person's in the control room, they cannot leave. One person's supposed to handle a, handle an incident? No, we can't, we can't expect that from anybody, I wouldn't expect you guys to go in there and do it, and I don't think you would. I don't think anybody in this room would. To go break up a fight, an altercation, anything that's going on in there, a medical emergency, takes two to do CPR. Hasn't changed, right Becky? And we've had, we've ran into those things.
And in the meantime, that one jailer is also preparing food, meals, and doing the laundry. If you go down to two, you basically have one person doing laundry and food and meal prep and the other one in the control room. That's one thing I, unless Faulkton has changed it, they, they get their meals from outside, they don't prepare them there themselves. I haven't talked to Kurt lately about it, but that's what they, that's what they told us when I was there.
Justin, you wanna add on, add on to that?
Yeah, it's, yeah, basically everything you said, it's, the way it's currently set up, three is what's needed over there for the security of the staff and the inmates. You know, if it's changed and something's built new and things are done differently, something that can be looked at. But what we're running right now is, that was one of the recommendations.
Sheriff, if you.
I also, um, I also just reached out to Terry Schenker, Mount North Central Steel, he was looking at some sheriff's offices for me, and this was three, four, three years ago, because the plan was three, three years old. But I had him come back over and, you know, and we all know when you're adding on to a building, it's, and it's gonna be a higher building, you're gonna have to build over the top of that if you're reusing that addition. Um, he hasn't gotten back to me on an actual plan or anything, but it's, he recommend, he recommended, you know, a completely separate thing, not to shut that down, keep going, bring your revenue back and use the south side. This would open up all, all brand new parking for all employees, we'd have, it would shift to this side of the courthouse. Um, but that was Terry's idea, I don't have no plans back, that was just a discussion that we had, and we walked the yard out here and around the buildings and, um, and then we checked some stuff out over here on the south side. But like I said, I just wanted, that's just an FYI item, um, someone else I reached out to, to talk to. Um, just the attaching buildings, he said you, you may not run into issues, but that's, if you're gonna run into issues, that's where it's gonna start, when you start attaching on, so.
I was just gonna ask the sheriff, if, if we did put up a new facility, you're still saying that you'd have to have a minimum of three people in there, no matter what?
Yes. Because your control room needs to be, someone needs to be in there at all times to handle phone calls, watch the monitors, and obviously to, if something is going on, someone to make the phone calls, because if you, they're tied up making phone calls, they can't get calls out to the outside to notify me, uh, any of my deputies or anything to come in there and assist, so.
So our operating costs, there's no chance of that ever going down?
Unless, we make cuts out of our things, but I mean, it's, uh, and obviously, that's our biggest expenditure, we all know that, you know, it's having, is the employee portion of it and benefits.
Then we know that no matter what, that, that one point one million dollars is never gonna go down, it's gonna go up.
Well, unfortunately, yeah.
And that's just a fact of life, it's just gonna keep going up.
Yep, cost of business, it, it ain't going down, that's for darn sure.
Anybody else have anything here? Yes, Kevin.
We need to make a decision one way or another, what we're gonna do, so we can set the budget. I will make a motion that we shut down the jail temporarily and put a plan together for a new building and give it to these other counties and see what potential revenue, income revenue can be in the meantime. But as far as setting the budget for next year, I don't think it's wise to spend money on an old building that we're, we know is gonna get tore down eventually here before long. So I am making a motion to, to close it, to explore these other options of building a new facility and seeing what the actual cost is gonna be. If we make changes to this, there's things that we can cut out on there that we all can see that, we could get the, possibly get this down, give it to the other counties, get commitments from them, not just on verbal, actually get commitments on paper to say, this is what it's gonna be, either join us or not.
I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'm gonna second that.
Do I got a second? Any, any more discussion on that?
There's no way we can afford to shut this jail down, no way, once it's down, it's done. There's no bringing in people during a storm, there's no bringing in inmates at night that are intoxicated, it's, when we shut it down, it's done.
Never be able to.
Right, and then you wanna see our taxes go up. This county's on the verge of being broke very, very soon. We have not been able to bring in enough money through taxes and stuff to fund our budget, we have funded that, supplemented our budget without a county income for many years, and now we've shut that off. We're about to face a horrendous disaster in this county very, very soon. And shutting that jail down just extended, we're increasing.
Mr. State's chairman.
It's not my decision, mate.
I, I will always say that that's, I've said that this winter, what do we do, that's what scared me about everything, is what do we do with inmates?
We have planning in place to do that already, and we showed that it's gonna save the county money, not add to it.
I understand that, but I said during the cases where we have the weather that we have, what do we do with them then, that's, that's what's always in my mind, what do we do with them?
What, what, I mean, I, I guess, maybe, maybe you can answer that question, maybe, maybe Jamie goes, knows the answer to that. What do these other counties do that don't have a jail that have eight, ten inmates every month, every day? What do they do?
I think most of them have their own facilities, I don't know of any counties this, that are our size that have as much business. Um, closest one would probably be Robbins County, but I believe they have their own facility.
Robbins has their own.
And, um, we're kind of in a unique situation.
One of them too don't have their own facility.
Well, I, Watertown has its own jail.
Um, Lake County, which is Madison, um, Moody County, they go, they go wherever, I mean, they're, they go all over the place because they, they get, they get told, they get told to get theirs out, to make room and whatnot.
How many inmates do they have, do you know, roughly?
I, off the top of my head, I don't.
Brule County is about our size, and they have, Brule, just Chamberlain, they have their own, and I think they also supplement from the counties around them, um, like Lyman and, and some of those, but Brule has its own. They're the one that's probably the most comparable to us on population, population makeup and, and things like that.
Yes, Mary.
To you, Jamie, what, what is your opinion as far as other, other counties, uh, stepping up to the plate?
I tend to think that, and this is my personal opinion, is we need to find some sources of revenue if we're going to expend that amount of money, um, and the only way to offset that cost of operating this facility or any facility would be is, uh, outside prisoners. Um, and, and I think you're correct when you stated that we're never gonna change our cost on staffing, because from my understanding, when we were going through the process of uh, developing a new jail, the, the federal standards are that at a minimum, you have to have three staff on, whether it's one or up to fifty prisoners, now if, um, if other counties aren't doing that, I think that's something that we would have to look at if we, how's our prisoners at, at their facility, is that are they complying? Because then, again, every, you can never, like you said, you can never eliminate all liability, you can just reduce the amount of the risk, but, um, yeah, it's a huge expense and, um, I don't know if Walworth County itself can, can bear that burden.
Is, is there any state laws or regulations that would not allow other counties to contribute to our facility as far as?
We can work out, yeah, we can work out any type of agreement for contribution of brick and mortar operation or whatever you want to do, that's totally between the two counties that are negotiating, yeah, there's nothing that states that you can't do that. And I think originally, when I first came into office, that was one of the things that they were trying to do, is get agreements from counties to put up money for building and how much they would contribute over a standard period to offset that cost to Walworth County. Wasn't that right, Josh?
Correct.
So, like I said before, I have absolutely no problem if these other counties would actually step up to the plate, but it seems like they've had, they've got no risk. They have zero risk, their only risk is, is they're gonna have to transport inmates an extra fifty miles, a hundred miles, whatever it might be, that's the only risk they've got. And yet, we're, as Walworth County, we're sitting here and we're having to take the whole brunt of everything.
You know, the, the time to jump them guys and to get that started is probably now because they're all doing budgets just like us.
That's why we need to make a decision.
And that's why I did this plan. It had the original thirty thousand in there for the operating.
It had the original thirty thousand and then twenty thousand brick and mortar, which, because I had that total figure of fifty thousand, I didn't have the breakdown in there for you guys, and I apologize for that, but yeah, that's what was, that's what the plan was supposed to be, but, um, like I said, that's fifty thou, some of the, some of these counties don't u- utilize that fifty thousand. The only one that goes over that is, um, Corson County. We've, they've paid out almost eighty thousand to us before in housing. So, I mean, again, this is just a seven year plan, you get that, you, if we did this, I mean, run, you can run the numbers, but, uh, the numbers are there on that plan, um, you know, and we get, get back the other stuff, you know, five mi, five million bucks ain't nothing to sneeze at. I wonder what we put in over the last twenty some odd years that we've never been putting into it, I mean, it's all been going into the general coffers, the general fund, I mean, the jail's never seen any of it, this, we just started putting out that money away, you know, there was nine hundred thousand dollars sitting in that building fund yet. You know, so, I mean, not saying it needs to be expended, but what I, what I am seeing is, you know, that's, five million dollars is five million dollars. And that's off that seven year plan that I gave you guys. And I think this is comfortable, I don't know, I would, we have, you know, we have to have meetings and obviously, um, take the chairman along, Kevin, whoever wants to go and have these, these sit down meetings with these six counties that I have listed here.
Yes, Jamie.
Um, I, I, in, in talking with the sheriff a little bit here too is, um, and I tend to agree with Commissioner Schlemmer, it's like, present them and say, here, if this is the deal, take it or leave it, that way at least we know whether they are going to be willing to contribute. Again, we are the ones that are taking the risk, if they don't wanna pony up the money, then we don't. And as Justin stated, this is the time, and if it's fifty or sixty thousand, you mail it to them and say, look, um, either you agree or you don't agree, we wanna know immediately. If they have to have a special meeting, that's on them. We're taking all of the, we need to push some things back on the other counties, it's like, like Sheriff was saying, is, he's being, my view is, is, uh, we're being too nice. It's on them, either you wanna pony up or you don't. And then we need to, if they don't, then we know, we don't have any sources of revenue and, um, to build, but we're basically going in circles again and again and again, because we're at where we started when I came into office, looking at contributions and things like that, and that's over six years ago, but, uh, I would agree is that we don't need to be the en- entity or county responsible for everyone else's viability unless they want to pay. We're like the only motel in a six or seven county area, we are, and if they don't want to, I agree, let them drive another hundred miles. But you need to also be very stern on your rules when they may wanna change their mind, say, no, you're not coming back, you had the opportunity, or you come back at a penalty, because we're all here to save money, because all counties are broke, not just ours, so, and we need to stick to those rules as far as making sure, because you're gonna go to another county, ask them for commitment, and then they're like, well, what if this happens or what if this happens, sorry, they're not coming back. But you, even by the decisions made today, um, you know, when are we gonna close? Two months, six months? Uh, because there's a lot of things that are gonna need to be changed, but I would tend to agree is that the other counties need to have a decision made and done quickly. And if we put them under a timeframe, sorry, it's our decision, not theirs, and we don't necessarily need to accommodate them, they should, and I think that's the one picture that we have not been looking at, is, is that other counties should be accommodating us because we have the jail, we should not be accommodating the other counties, and that's what we've been doing.
I mean, is this, is, does this resemble what you guys wanna see? Can we agree on that? On that portion?
Absolutely.
What's the?
Something like that.
Okay. What do you wanna see in here?
Well, I, personally, I feel like the, and, and I have no idea, like you said, I know there's some counties that don't have the inmates, um, some of them like one inmate, maybe average type thing, and that might be high, I don't know.
To the north of us.
Yes, um, so for them to wanna commit a whole doll, a bunch of dollars, I can see that it probably, oh gee, I can just ship my inmate down the road and, and not have to worry about it. But I do think that we have to take and look at it from the standpoint of a, a larger dollar amount for bricks and mortar to make these guys, just like Jamie said, get them to commit. Even, if they're going to commit, if they on, if they understand the value of having this jail in Walworth County and having to be able to just drive thirty miles or whatever it might be to here, there's gotta be some value to that. And I think we need to take and put a value out there that is beneficial to us to make, if we're gonna build a new facility, this baby's gotta pencil out. Because if we're thinking we're losing, our operation is one point one million right now, if we put a new facility up, we're talking a whole different ballgame, no. put a new facility up, we're talking a whole different ballgame, no. I don't care if they, if they're bringing their inmates here, they, they have to be some commitment to where we know that those dollars are going to be here. And if they don't commit to it, I just, like I said, that's why I seconded the motion to close this thing because at least we have the option, or we're going to have the ability to get our inmates out of here and see what that cost is going to be. And then we can take and build our, if we, if it looks like we need to build, we build a facility and make it so it's going to take and operate and get some dollars back in from these other counties to do that.
Don't you think though that it would be better, I'm agreeing with, with you on that, but don't you think that we should get these counties to come forward and say yes? No, I mean on, on the paper.
We've tried that for, I've been on this committee for a year. We've tried that for a year, we haven't got zero commitments. And until you put pressure on them.
Because I don't think they thought it was serious.
And guess what? If we close it down, it's pretty serious.
That I know it's serious.
And that's, that's my point. They're going to take it and realize that we're serious. We're either going to shut our jail down and we're going to ship our inmates out and take facility space where you, where you have places to go now. And if we, if we do that, they're going to realize that how valuable this, this facility is. And then they'll have to make a decision whether or not they're going to commit, because right now they've got nothing to worry about.
And so is the guy who gave you the US Marshals.
Absolutely.
They'll get their attention, they'll say, hey, maybe they are serious.
Just one thing on the, on the contracts that we have existing, if you do vote to close, you're going to have to set a date, but we need to set that date that would be in compliance with our notice requirements under the contract, just so we don't have any liability issues with regard to that, just kind of FYI.
I will admit my motion to include a date.
And that's what, January 1?
I would have to look at the contract. I think there's like 180 day notices what we require. Does that sound right, Josh?
Two notice.
Yeah, I, without looking at all of the agreements, I do not have an answer for you on what it would be. I would probably, you still, now you have an amended motion, but I would probably withdraw that and see if you need to get to that point to close and then we can figure out a date which doesn't necessarily have to be set today. You can put it on the agenda for the next meeting or whatever. But we're getting a little convoluted here with our motions and our discussion and we should kind of keep it a little, that's what I would probably do.
Is there any more discussion on that?
Yes, Jim. We probably need either Commissioner Hobart to withdraw his amendment or you have to act on the amendment to include a date.
If I remember, I think that was a two or three month deal.
Well, that doesn't have to be done now.
We just got, you made an amendment to your motion, so we either have to address the amendment to the motion or.
I'll withdraw the amendment.
Okay, yes.
Do we have to close the jail to find out if other counties are going to help with the new one? I'll see why we'd have to close this one. Get that information with the jail open. You know, either going to do it or not, the jail closing, you know, it's pretty serious.
Have we got any commitments from the last year and a half?
Has anybody been out there that has said, pushed them?
That we did.
I've been.
We went to the different commissions and we can get anything.
We'll be answered, we'll back again.
We'll go back the next time when, when we have an answer says, all right, now you guys are on your own.
We can do that now.
We did that.
I mean, we don't have to close the jail to get that decision if they're coming or not.
We don't have to, but that's my motion.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Here, none, I'll do roll call. Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
Davis?
No.
I'm going to vote no. Motion failed.
Do you want me, I'll ask the board. Or do you guys want to? Do you want me to reach out to these guys? Email, phone call, have some, possibly set up a meeting, take Kevin along or Mr. Chairman, I was going to suggest possibly a, a meeting with the chairman of each county, I mean, obviously our entity and the sheriff from each, each entity and actually have a sit-down and let the, let that chairman take it back and their, and the sheriff take it back to them, or Kevin can do that, I don't care, but.
Yes, Jamie.
I would send them a letter basically, because again, this is, this is exactly where we're at when I first came in six years ago. And as several commissioners have said, this is going round and round. Again, we are taking the responsibility to hear, send them a letter saying, under your contract, we can give you X amount of days before we cut off your prisoners. This is what, we're giving you notice right now. Put the pressure on them, not on us, and say, if you are not going to enter into this agreement to fund the cost for prisoners and brick and mortar, you're done. Why are we keeping the pressure and the, the effort on us? That should be on them. We're again, the only motel within several counties. And that's, that's the way I'm looking at it, is we, we're going to just keep going round and round and round and. Legally, we make the decision, so let's not.
I'm gonna just add to Jamie's a little bit, I, I think that letter should get done like immediately. I feel that the jail committee, Kevin and Marion should be on that or whatever, I'm with you, they're on that, but I'm, what I'm saying is I think it should be done immediately to get to them counties, because if they are not going to commit to it, that, that will change my mind, because they've got to start committing to it, otherwise, because Walworth County cannot afford this themselves. I don't, they can't. You know that, we all know that, sitting here. So that letter should get drafted immediately and those counties need to step forward now. Otherwise, I, I can, there's only one thing that can happen here, is if.
Well, we're going to have to decide on a number. I mean, yeah, they, they can't make a decision on, we're going to have to shoot them some kind of a number.
I would.
You know what I mean?
Suggestion, I would say that as soon as this meeting's done with, I would say the two commissioners, we'll go down to the office and talk to you and work out that number. We need to get that number worked out. Yes, Justin?
That was what I was going to ask, if you want that letter out, I need a, I need a number, a brick and mortar number and what you guys are thinking.
We'll have to get the jail committee together and come up with a decision of what that number's going to be.
Because Kevin is right, it is budget time and that's what needs to be done now. All right?
Well, then I ask that this, we have a meeting ASAP then, and get it put on the next agenda, if not a special meeting on, with, with just this on the, on the agenda.
Yes, Jamie.
I don't think we need a special meeting. I think between the sheriff and the committee, they can approve the dollar amount.
I think so too.
I don't think the commission needs to approve.
I, no, I don't want to do that. I want the support of the whole board.
Again, we are wasting our time here, gentlemen.
Yes, we are.
This is a six-year issue. It needs to be resolved, it's budget time. You need to cooperate here and get a resolution or we're going to be in the same spot.
I, I believe that Jamie's right, I think that you guys should put that number together and I'm pretty sure the rest of the commission's going to agree with it.
And that's fine if the, if I got full support of the board to do that, I just don't want it coming back that we've made the decision, you know, and.
One way to find out, yes, Jamie.
I just think that since Commissioner Scholmer and Commissioner Hobart are on the committee, I don't think you're going to have a lot of problems with, if they're going to approve it, they're the ones that are, are the ones that are most critical of our costs, so again, that's why I don't think there's going to need to be an issue of, they're going to approve it now, you're not going to get much blowback from the commission. Is that, I think, fair?
Okay. Thank you.
I think you got some more stuff.
Oh, yes, I know. Moving on, motion to hire James Maron, full-time correctional officer at 1515 an hour.
I'll need a motion for that.
Nice move.
Okay, a motion on the floor, I need a second.
A second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed.
Okay, the next thing is a motion for a 50 cent increase to, for Justin Youngworth for completion of jail administrator and jail management. The first portion, there was two, two pieces to that correspondence, he finished the jail management portion now. I'm requesting a 50 cent increase for Justin.
Okay, I'll take a motion for that.
Nice move.
We got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
A second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that?
So he just did the jail management, not the administrator?
No, he did both. It was in, it was in two parts. He finished the administrator portion and then jail management was the second portion.
Any other discussion? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed.
And then my other one is motion to approve 50 cents per hour for Travis Pence, promoted him to sergeant. He was on a probationary period and completed that. Travis does an excellent job for me and for the sheriff's office.
Okay, I'll need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion?
Did he get a raise when he went to sergeant?
No.
To sergeant probationary period?
No, he did not.
Any more discussion? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed.
A motion to approve certification wage increase for Haley Leibel, 50 cents. She completed her, her correctional officer certification. She is one of my part-timers and they're required to do, go through the same, same certification process.
I'll need a motion for that.
Nice move.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
A second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed.
The last one, motion to approve certification wage increase 50 cents per hour for Tracy Berg. The, that was what you guys added at the beginning, the, the name was accidentally omitted.
Sorry.
Okay, I'll take a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
We got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Here, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you for your guys' time.
Thanks, Josh, Justin.
Okay, let's get somebody to get me.
Just, yeah, you guys get in touch with me, my, I'm around, everybody, you guys got my cell phone, and we'll get that other thing hashed out, I'll have Jamie go over it and then we'll send it out via email and through the mail, okay?
Want to take a five-minute break?
Okay, yeah, take a five-minute break.
I found this very interesting.
I find it very frustrating.
I'm sure that was so illegal.
Oh, I'm sure.
I stayed there 72 hours. Did I sleep? I sure did. I'll pay the first two minutes. I only had one escape on me. Had to bring, bring the hacksaw to that. Oh, it's a big rock, I had a door that they don't, they had to pull through, the hacksaw. You know what? Only two left. The other gen was still there, they come home, we broke out at 2:00 in the morning. They were nice about it. They go across the river, you don't see them, so. I told you, it was a big person. I work at the hospital, so you don't. Sounds like a babysitter. I know my taxes are well at work.
Green called and said Gary was coming, but that was...
Yeah, he's here.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Well, welcome.
He took his hat off. Don't recognize you with your hat on.
He was a little shiny there, you couldn't see.
(inaudible).
Gary, you're going to be up front or anything else?
I'm sorry.
I'm going to call me back to order, listen, Gary.
My intent is to follow what I did in the past and meet with the board every two weeks. Uh, this had an easement involved with it with Web Water, so I felt worthy of bringing it to the board for discussion. Uh, here's the copy of the easement, there's a place for a signature for highway superintendent and a place for a signature for county commission, uh, due to the proximity of residential, uh, area that has artesian wells, uh, some drainage stuff in place in public right-of-way there now, I think it's the best interest that, uh, we ask Web Water to consider another alternative. Uh, you people as a commission have the authority to override my opinion and I'm just expressing my concerns with it, so. I guess I know where he's talking about, so I guess I'll throw my two cents in there, it, uh, there's, I know there's two artesian lines that got crossed and like I said, the drainage, a lot of trees, I guess my opinion is it should, they should go around, around all that and not go in the private next to the road or the right-of-way, I guess that's my opinion, I don't think we should disturb that other, that stuff. According to easement, it's, it's, uh, it's placement of a thirty inch ductile pipe, uh, part of the Web Water system, uh, with the limited, uh, I don't know, I can't tell you what the right-of-way limits are there, but if, for instance, there's sixty-six footer right-of-way and the road's taken up, uh, thirty feet of that, that doesn't leave for much room in the grassed-in area of the ditches, uh, I'm anticipating some possible road damage and here again, uh, based on the residential, I mean, the residential stuff, uh, that's utilized in that area, I think they should go out, so.
Yes, Jim.
I think basically then what you would probably want to do is, uh, the chair would ask for a motion to reject the, uh, easement and suggest them to submit alternate route.
Okay, do you guys all understand what we're talking about? Kevin?
I didn't see where it was actually at.
Just south of town.
Mark Stickemire's residence, starting at his house west one mile, north side of the road. Consider that, uh, the way the system works, that, uh, if, if a Web Water line is placed outside of right-of-way but adjacent to, you understand that? It's on private property, if the county determines that, uh, there's a need for road construction and we start looking for, uh, fill material from, from, uh, the outside of the right-of-way, we're responsible for placing that line, the cost of it, and that has happened in the past, but, uh, that's for your information.
I guess if nobody has any questions on it, I would take a motion to reject Webb's easement.
I'll make the motion to reject it.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second, any more discussion on that? Here none?
I just, I was going to ask Gary, so what you were saying there, if they take an alternate route and they go outside on the pasture land fence or whatever and we had to do some work, would still be our responsibility on that line?
If they would place that line just outside of right-of-way, uh, and if we determine we have to reconstruct the road and feel the need to take dirt from over the top of that pipe, it's our responsibility, the costs are incurred for us to do that. Uh, in this situation, if they're in public right-of-way and the same need arises, it's their, it's, it's out of their pocket that, uh, you're in our way, you're in our right-of-way, uh, they have to move it, so, but just the geographic location, uh, with the residence there, uh, it just seemed like the best place is to be well outside of right-of-way. I don't know if you want to cite that in your motion, the reason why you're rejecting or, good?
Yes.
I would just think that we, when we reject it, whoever's going to notify Webb that we are, uh, rejecting their, their request for an easement, we can put that right in there stating that we want them to resubmit, um, a, a different plan and, and the reason for why we rejected it.
I'll claim that, uh, my professional status, I should have contacted one of those people at Webb and had them meet here, I neglected to do that, so, for what it's worth.
You still want to go through, that's the way it is?
Yeah, I'd, I'd recommend rejecting.
Okay, so you got a motion, I have a second, any other discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion passed.
Just a couple little items, uh, Third Avenue West, uh, Twelfth Street West and Moorbridge from the Old Eagles Club going west was severely broken up, the asphalt road, uh, took it upon myself to get a quote from Jensen Rock and Sand, uh, for some, we used asphalt treated base material, we covered the asphalt road with gravel and currently now it is a gravel road with the intent that, that, uh, down the road, we process full depth and, uh, a potential of going all the way to the Reston, uh, area on eighteen oh four, the road's rough, uh, I test cord in one of the potholes in the area we covered and there was, appeared to be two inches of gravel base under the asphalt, totally uncut for, uh, it represents what our system is, uh, we need to think serious about building gravel bases on asphalt roads or turning them back to gravel, so, it's going to cost some money. The cost proposal I accepted was thirteen dollars and fifty cents a ton, uh, the price is high, but the stockpile was in Moorbridge that limited our freight costs to the project and it's a done deal, so this is kind of after the fact, I took it upon myself to do it, so. Another little item, uh, there's Shannon Schlemmer requested an address change on Huff Court, uh, there was a lot of time spent by me, it was considered the possibility of a development, uh, with developments, you have to cross the Ts and dot the Is and make available addresses for the whole development, it isn't, uh, something that comes to planning and zoning, but the intent was work with the potential developer and come up with an addressing detail and if, uh, if this house's address is this and another one comes in, the system is in place to accommodate, uh, any kind of development potential. In this case, Shannon, uh, Shannon's address is two nine two one three Huff Court and he'd like to change Huff Court to Wildlife Lane and I met with Shannon and told him the system is kind of intricate, uh, the word lane doesn't exist in the rural addressing system, uh, it was kind of agreed upon and this is the, the action of approach I'm going to be taking from here on out, is that, uh, if somebody wants a, a change of address for a road or a court or something like that, it's going to be entirely their expense. Uh, we don't, uh, number one, that could deter people randomly coming in and wanting changes, uh, but in this case, I'm going to support it since Huff Court was named for the individual that Shannon bought the house from, so, uh, we're going to be changing this address to two nine two one three Wildlife Court and, uh, Shannon's going to be paying the cost of the sign, uh, if we install it, he pays the cost of labor and mileage, but he said he would install it and the sign will come back to our inventory. Uh, and if anybody catches you on the street and they talk about changing addresses, that's the standard that's being taken, uh, we don't want to change them, but, uh, what more can I say? It was all agreed upon and, and we'll be sending a notice to, uh, the dispatch center that there'll be a change of address out there. That was for your information and the last thing is, uh, there's a cost quote for a gate to be placed at the headache pit, I believe this is, uh, two thousand eighteen quote, uh, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-nine cents, that, uh, I approve that and that gate will be in place, so, that's it.
Anybody have anything for Gary?
I had one thing for you, I know it's not on here, but I ran out to Mollstead yesterday, uh, is there any way that we can get some gravel on that road going to the campground back there? There's four spots in there that have really bad washout, well, one really bad washout, if you don't have a four-wheel drive, you're not going to get back there.
And that's into the house area there?
It goes back to the dam area.
Okay. Okay, I'll look at that, uh, we have no gravel inventory in Glenham, uh, that's something we're trying to, uh, we're going to attempt to find more gravel, uh, it really kind of limits, uh, what we can do, uh, it's...
We don't have any out that south pit.
Uh, east of Glenham? Uh, no, that inventory is gone, uh, we kind of did a little test hole, that, that pit was, uh, I don't know what the right word is, it's been a gravel pit for a long time and there's been a lot of, uh, scavenging, uh, it makes it tough to, uh, to find another gravel vein and, uh, we were of the opinion that, that the gravel didn't exist anymore, it was gone, uh, I wanted to make one last ditch effort at, at, for my satisfaction that, yeah, we can, uh, we can reclaim this thing and get out of here and I'm not ready to make that, uh, take that stand yet, so.
If you'd just take a look at it.
I'll look at it, it could be something that, uh, a simple blade pass or something, you know, that...
That one's going to be...
See, I believe that gravel, uh, either comes as pit run material from the county's bit up, up north here or, uh, Akowska on Swan Creek or the Hiddenwood Pit and all of the inventories are pretty low and we're trying to deal with, uh, south spots and roads and limited gravel quantities and it's, it's going to take a little while to get it fixed, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Gary. Number twenty-one.
Put in three nineteen and Sharp on that, then we add them.
Row three nineteen, uh, we had a meeting yesterday, Jamie and I did, with, with Clark Engineering and, uh, we went over everything and then Clark and I went out to, to three nineteen and we determined that they're going to come in, what they're going to do is they're going to reshape that by, uh, the oil building of Jerome's, they're going to get that all to drain all the way down to McFarland's down, they're going to, they're going to get that all so it all drains around there and, uh...
And that was going to be at their cost?
At, at theirs.
So?
They seen that their, where the problem was, they figured that that's the only way to straighten the problem out and they, they agreed to everything, yes, Jamie?
And they're not, and you can correct Commissioner Schilling that that would then basically clear all of the issues off of County Road three nineteen, uh, and so then everyone would be done, which then will spill into the next one with regard to Sharp, but that's my understanding is, is that sums up all of the issues with that particular project.
We went over different options and then we determined that that probably was going to be the, without tearing out a bunch of stuff that I think would have been a waste, I think it would have been money just stupidly spent, so anyhow, we determined that, I figured that you guys would just agree to it, but it, it's going to drain now, they're going to, they're going to make it so drained, you can see the high in there that somehow got put in there, but it did, so, just wanted to let you know what we got done on that. So then next would be with Sharp, we still owe them, it's like, to finish it out, it's like thirty-four, I think, but anyhow, I would take a motion to pay Sharp off the rest of the contract, is that be right, Jamie?
Correct.
Sharp, you're going to be the ones to fix the height issue or?
Well, he did, uh, Clark did ask if there was anybody around here that would and I said, I really don't know who would go in there and start fixing the ditch like that, I said, I think you'd be better off just, because, uh, Sharp is in Moorbridge, so they're going to have them come back and, and do it, I mean, I said I would do it, but I said I, I don't have time and, so he's going to get Sharp to do it themselves, they were going to take care of that.
So if we do this payment to Sharp, then Clark is, Clark is taking care of all the...
And Sharp is taken care of, correct?
Yeah, but Clark is paying.
They're paying Sharp.
They're going to pay whoever, whatever it is to, to fix that out there, they got to shape all that and re-gravel it going into Jerome's building so it still works, but Clark is going to pay that, they, they said that's, that's our problem, so they're paying for all that.
Does...
So there ain't no money out of Sharp.
Was Jerome satisfied with that idea?
I had visit, I had visited with Jerome before that.
Okay.
Numerous times and that's, that's what Jerome said, I, Jerome said, I just want the water not to sit here.
Okay. I make a motion to pay Sharp, balance them.
All right, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second, got a second, any more discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, motion passed. All right, landfill. Says April, May reports.
Can you get those? I think they're at his desk. This is the church, this church. There's something else.
This, this is a district.
I, if, she was, she was going to be here, but her flight got canceled, so I'm not sure where her, her reports are.
Well, I'll just, I'll just, uh, fill in a little bit that I know of with, I know we were talking about the pricing, that money is owed, I know that the high one is down to fifty-nine, right now fifty-nine thousand and the next high one is down to thirty, thirty-five thousand, thirty-three thousand, so that I know for a fact, so. I guess we'll just move to the, the next item, consider motion to approve groundwater monitoring proposal for GeoTech.
Is that something they've done before? Didn't we, didn't we approve...
Well, I'll just, I'll just, uh, fill in a little bit that I know of with, I know we were talking about the pricing, that, that money is owed. I know that the high one is down to fifty-nine, right now, fifty-nine thousand. And the, the next high one is down to thirty, thirty-five thousand, thirty-three thousand. So, that I know for a fact. And I guess we'll just move to the, the next item. Consider motion approved groundwater monitoring proposal for Geotech.
Is that something they've done before? Didn't we, didn't we approve that when Brian was?
This is the deal that we, didn't we go down and have them put a proposal together for?
Oh, it took, Jimmy.
Isn't that what we voted on?
No. I don't think so.
Looks like from the, um, Geotech cover letter, it's basically something that we do on an annual basis. Um, it says, the twenty eighteen annual report was submitted to the D E N R on February eighteenth, twenty nineteen. Changes to the current approved groundwater monitoring program were not recommended. Twenty nineteen groundwater monitoring, they have that spelled out. It looks like this is something that we annually do and that they, uh, then submit the required information to Apartment Environment, Natural Resources, and Pier. So I would assume this is a contract that we approve every year with these individuals to make sure that we're in compliance with requirements coming out of the state of South Dakota, so.
Smooth, sweet.
So then you would just need to move to enter into that agreement with the particular individuals.
I just don't move. Okay. Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. I'll second that. You got a second? Any more discussion on that? How should I say that price?
Sure.
Yeah, the, the price of that, it must get paid pretty well. It could do eleven thousand, five thirty-two fifty.
It's one of those necessities that you're going to need in order to make sure that your landfill's in compliance with all of the rules out there.
Hear none, all favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. Motion passed. Okay, next one, uh, discussion regarding City of Mulbridge request. Does anybody know anything about that with Al Boyd? Do you know anything about that?
That was the deal minutes from last meeting where-
I thought they were gonna come over here.
They wanted, they were gonna have a representative and evidently Al was supposed to come over, but they haven't seen him.
They had a few crimes this morning. Actually, they did, so, um-
That might be the problem.
Pardon?
That might be the problem.
Yeah, so that's why I would assume they made, I figure there was a couple of issues this morning, so.
Yeah, we'll just contact Al and put it on the next agenda. The next, I had motion to approve, uh, charge interest on all past due landfill accounts. Maybe you put that on there?
I put that on there. I've had, since we mentioned that last meeting, I've had quite a few people, mostly I had people talk to me. None of us get by with some outfit carrying us for four to six years. All of us in, in our business get charged interest after thirty days and after ninety days, if you're not paid in full, we're cut off. So I would move that, that Walworth County charges interest on all past due accounts and anything over ninety days, they'd be cut off. And then, and they do get current, it'd be cash basis only.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Got a second? Any more discussion on that?
If they got current, why would we switch into cash basis only?
Once they get current, that's what happens to me. So you don't get back into that same situation.
It's gonna be pretty tough with Standing Rock. That's our biggest one.
Yeah.
They're not gonna do a stan- Standing Rock, I guarantee you, will not do a cash basis only.
Sounds like they're about that way now that Becky got them to wear. They don't dump until they bring a check.
Right.
What, when are you, your motion, uh, when are you thinking to make it effective?
I think it should've been, it'd take four years ago.
I don't disagree with that.
You know, I, I'm sure it's something we're not gonna implement-
Well, I just, I guess I'm a little bit concerned about throwing this out there with knowing that we've got two big accounts out there. And then all of a sudden, uh, get somebody upset over and, and not, not saying that it's not right.
They have a hundred and twenty days to, to get current.
My position would be is to, uh, they already owe the county a significant amount of money. Why would we allow them to continue to, if they don't wanna use our landfill, don't use our landfill? Because if one's sixty thousand, that one's been that way for how many years now? And then the other one, if there's another one that's thirty thousand, uh, worst case scenario is they tip over and file bankruptcy and we lose it. But why should we continue to, uh, take the risk of losing money or more money? I, I would agree with Mr. Houck is financially, again, we need to protect as many assets as possible and not to, sorry if it makes them mad, but pay your bill. Um, they should not be owing us thirty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars.
It's come down a lot in the last year.
Yeah. I, I think when we first started putting them on a program, they were at fifty thousand. I mean, it has gotten way up and now it's coming back down, but, um-
It was over a hundred and twenty dollars.
At one time, yeah. That's what I'm saying is, is I-
It was available, uh, three months ago.
It's like, uh, you're running a big risk. If they tip over and file chapter seven or something like that, we're out sixty thousand dollars. And we're continuing to allow them to basically use us as a bank for free. And, um, I don't know, like Mr. Houck said, I don't, uh, when I bought my house, I had to put the full purchase price down. And, uh, I didn't get away with not having to pay. And we're running the risk of losing ninety thousand dollars that's already out there.
What was the interest? What are you gonna set for an interest rate?
I would see like that, one and a half percent. Just because I, I noticed that on some of the bills I just got this month. That's what, that's what they're charging you over thirty, after thirty days, one and a half percent.
I guess I'm gonna, I'll throw my two cents in too. I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with any of you guys on that. Should've been done four years ago. Should've been done twenty years ago. I'm just saying, that should've been in place twenty years ago. But I guess what I'm looking at, and Jim, I visited with you too about it, I just, I think that, I, I think that we should bring it in at the beginning of the year and, and say, okay, this is, this is how the policy is gonna be. I mean, I just, no, I just think it's a little hard, just right in the middle, say, well, here you guys. That's just my opinion. I just, I just feel that it should be something that started out where we already, the year's quite over already and, and say, okay, this is how things are gonna be. That's just my opinion. Yes, Jim?
I would at least send them a letter and say, effective this date, this is when it's gonna start instead of just, man, thirty days from today.
You wanna do it at the beginning of the fourth quarter, first of October? I wouldn't have a problem.
I, I guess that's my question. And my, and my concern about it is if we send a letter out, uh, we got thirty thousand or fifty thousand on the books and they send a letter, okay, you're delinquent and you're gonna, you're charged one point five percent interest without them knowing this was coming down the line. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm saying that I, I one, agree one hundred percent that we need to be charging interest on it. But they've already got this big accumulated debt out there that we are instantly gonna start charging interest on.
Uh, who are the two that are delinquent right now?
Stanley Rock and Hartland.
So the ones that collect in county and out of county, right? Um, again, I don't see a prob- we neglect, I mean, they've been on that county dime for how long? Not paying interest, um, again-
I don't know if Hartland's been bad, has it?
They're not usually behind too much.
I mean, they're typically pretty up to current, maybe have a thirty days deal where they're-
But would you allow someone to go thirty thousand dollars in debt to you? Um, even though they've been normally paying? This is a huge risk for you guys.
Yeah.
Especially when we're tight. So I would agree with Commissioner Houck that, um, we've already been providing them with the benefit. Interest-free financing. And if we cut them short now, uh, someone else will come in and haul garbage in Mulbridge. Or someone else will come in and haul for Standing Rock. But why should we continue to bear the brunt of having that debt out there? When that debt was bes- bes- specifically, Standing Rock has been out there for two years. Um, and they've been using us as a bank for two years, which is, and, and that's the unfortunate thing, is that we have not been charging them interest. But I would agree with Commissioner Houck that we probably need to decide that soon. And if it puts them on, that's not our fault. We have been helping them out dramatically.
Yes.
Can we, can we send a letter to them and state that, okay, you've got a thirty day notice and effective a month from now, you are going to be charged interest if your accounts aren't up to date?
I would-
Well, Jim said, uh, over.
Which, I mean, that's first quarter, but-
I, I would assume we would send a letter with them with the next bill. And I assume our bill when I would, I don't know when they go out, if they end, go out the end of the month or, or the first day, first of each month, but I would assume that would be attached with the next bill they got. But I've never been in the garbage business, but I'll bet they're collecting their money.
Well, I'm sure they've got issues just like we have, they're not collecting people, but, I mean, it's still-
Like Jamie said, what's the incentive for them to pay us?
No, exactly. I, I don't disagree at all.
So what kind of timeframe are you looking at, Jim? Like you said, October?
When, when do we send bill out? Do you know, Eva?
Um, I do not. I do not.
I would probably act on the motion first to see if you actually need to do that. And then once the motion is either approved or denied, then do another motion on when to provide them notification, what the interest rate and those types of terms are gonna be. Cause right now, it's just that, cut off all the delinquent accounts that are ninety days old and start charging interest. So then after you vote on that, depending upon what your vote is, then you're gonna have to determine what your interest rate is, when, all of those steps. So, we're kinda getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, cause we may not even need that, depending upon how the motion goes.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor and a second. I will, we'll call Kevin.
Can, can I ask a, a question before we do the roll call?
Yes.
What was your exact motion to just?
To charge, start charging interest on all accounts-
Ninety days. Could you say?
All past due accounts over thirty days and anything over ninety days, it would be cut off until paid and put them into a cash basis.
Okay, so you are-
That'd be a fairly good incentive for them not to get over ninety days, in my mind.
You're still gonna include the cash basis after ninety days.
I, that's what my motion said, yeah.
That's the only part-
In my mind, that's a fairly good incentive not to get over ninety days.
I know we're gonna lose the biggest account then.
Any other discussion?
Okay.
I'll go, we'll call Kevin.
That's the part I have, uh, yes.
Marion.
I'll, I'll say yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Dave? I'll vote no. Motion passed. Okay, I take a motion to set what, uh, interest would be and all the, all the little things.
So, uh, can I suggest a motion?
Yes.
That the motion would be is that we set an interest rate with regard to delinquencies over thirty days, that when these rates will go into effect, am I right? Am I talking too fast, Eva?
No, I'm with you.
Okay. And that when the, anything else that you would think of, that would be, when they're basically what the interest rate is going to be, when it goes into effect and with the ones that are already over ninety days, when are we gonna start counting the ninety day clock?
Yes, Jim. In my mind, we don't start until, until they get the notes. That starts the ninety days.
So notice will start the ninety day clock on-
Some of us have been out there four and five years, but that, we're not gonna count that. The clock starts when we implement this.
Weren't you talking about October? You said that-
Well, I, I, I didn't mention that.
And then you just threw that out, I mean, is that when you wanna go?
Fourth quarter, first of October. It would be nice if we knew what, when they sent the bill out.
It'd be at least four months.
Yeah.
Well, should we just say October then?
And just put then, so basically what interest rate do you want?
I could charge one and a half percent of all the, all the places I probably buy parts if I don't.
So interest rate of one and a half percent?
That's what I would propose.
Um, and then rates will go into effect October first of twenty nineteen. So then basically, and, and I wanna make sure you get it right, Eva, that the motion, the suggested motion would be is that the interest rate on delinquent accounts over thirty days will be one and a half percent per month or eighteen percent per annum. And that the cash pay and other cutoffs will go into effect October first of two thousand nineteen.
So then-
So then you would have to make that motion, cause I just suggested-
I would so move.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Got a second?
And then, and then that's your change.
Any other discussion on that? Yes, Jim?
So then in my mind, if we're gonna implement that October first, they're gonna send that out. So they, if they send their bills out, let's say on the first of, of the month, then their bill would, would be due November first. So then they wouldn't get started charged, or get started being charged interest till December first.
November first. No, November first.
Or November, yeah. Well, goal.
Start this.
October, they got the thirty days to pay for the bill they get, the first part of-
It would be December first, right?
Yeah.
Now I prompt them, some of the go ahead, some of them just go ahead and start paying what they owe, so they don't get the interest.
So we're not starting any of this talk.
The letters are gonna go out, but the interest date start date is October one.
Right. And the, and the cutoffs and other implements will be October first. So realistically, like you're discussing, they'll get our November, our October bill, like say, November first. And realistically, we don't start adding on interest to December first, because whatever is unpaid when the next billing cycle is, then we would add interest on that. But on the new amounts that are coming in, of course, there would be no interest.
The cutoff dates though would be ninety days from October first, correct?
That would be the soonest-
The actual cutoff date.
You're exactly right. As soon as we could cut them off would be January first of twenty twenty.
Yeah, because that way they have the ninety days from that is the starting time and the clock will start to tick out, out of this of October one.
Well, we send the bills, the letter out with the next bill, which would be August. That would be September before you even get to October.
Right, they're gonna have two months to be, so you realize they're gonna get started charging interest on October one.
That's what we talked about, so that we didn't just put this on them right now. So they had a little bit of time to process.
So technically, they've got five months before they get cut off and emptied.
If they decide not to pay, they're, they're, they're done in five months.
Well, in my mind, I think that's, there ain't any reason-
And I think there's some agreements out there. Personally, there's, there's some agreements already made with the one big one that they need to bring a check every time, hey, to get their, their accounts out there.
I, I realize that, but-
That has come down a lot in the last few months.
A lot, which is good.
It is, and I think Becky's done a good job at that.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor and a second? Anything else? Hear none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion passed. So Jim, can we just do the executive session after the new business, so that everyone can leave, you don't have to come back?
That, that would be fine, we need them, yeah.
Any old business?
When you guys was talking to, uh, uh, Clark, was there any talk on the city takeover?
Did they come back and talk to you, Jamie?
Not yet.
No, they, they went there. I, I talked a little bit with, I, I had water boiling out of the ground, so I could not go out there with them. And, uh, they were gonna go out, I threw my, I threw, I said, I, I believe it's settling. I said, that's kinda how it looks to me. I said, they only fixed one crack. I said, unless they fixed another one since I was out there, but I said, I only seen that they routed one joint. Uh, so.
And, and, um, Commissioner Schloemer and Schilling and myself met after the last meeting, um, with regard to some of the issues with regard to, uh, those particular things. And Clark is aware of it, um, on the engineering portion of it. And we're just kinda waiting to see what steps we need to take. um, the engineering portion of it, and we're just kinda waiting to see what steps we need to take on curing the problem, and specifically what the problem is and how bad, I think we know what the problem is, it's just we don't really know how bad the problem is, is that kind of a fair statement?
And I told him, Clark yesterday too, I told him, I said that the, the federal ones, the people that looked at all our federal disaster, they were at Culver and they looked at it and, and I told them exactly what, they voiced their opinion on exactly what they felt is wrong with it. So Clark is fully aware of that. So they were gonna go out there and.
And at least kinda get an idea of what they're gonna need to come back with or what they're gonna need to particularly look at before they make a determination of what the issue is, and then the next step would be is if there is an issue, who do they think's responsibility is, and then we're gonna keep going, just like, look.
Like I said, I threw, threw my opinion to him, I said, I, it looks to me like the Culver, I said, is, it's almost like it's settling, like it's, I said, the bottom is what's coming apart, I said, that is settling, so. Anyhow, they were out there yesterday, I, Gary missed him, cause he was gonna, I called him and I don't think he could run out there at the time when they did, so. Anything else?
Has Gary looked at that as far as what his opinion is on the thing, or?
I told him about it, I don't, I haven't visited with him about it. Any other old business? New business? I, I guess I just got one thing, I, uh, we got, county got a letter from City of Java and, uh, about the properties over there, I visited with them last night, I went to the meeting, told them why and everything that it didn't get done, but I went over last night, I, I mowed them two properties and I got them all cleaned up, so I guess my question is, what do you, what do you guys wanna do with them properties until we do something? You know, it'll be this fall, but there's gonna be mowing that needs to be done. It was, somebody should have ran in there with a baler, but anyhow, it's done, so what do you guys wanna do?
I don't suppose we have any, wait, our county boy over there.
I don't know, you mean like one of the tractor ones?
No, I mean like.
The rider, you mean, or something?
Grass off of one of the yard, or, I, I never paid attention to the grass or anything around there.
I don't know what trailer they've loaded on, well, they might be able to load it on that one, probably that one.
I don't know, that really doesn't fit in Jake, Dave's job description, does it?
No, so. I, I don't have a problem doing it, but like I said, I, it, it needed to be done. The letter was, not too many days, so. You guys decided?
One of the mowers going, guess they're over that week.
No, they would, they'd be screaming, cause I'm pretty sure they'd have lights broke off and, you know. That would not be a very good idea. I, wanna try to find somebody that will mow it. Johnny Lindman, he's, I think he mows the cemetery over at Jav- I, I don't think, but. Yes, Jim?
I would probably agree with your suggestion that, cause we did get a notice from Mowbridge with regard to the house that we sold, and I was gonna talk about that new business, but, um, perhaps, until we can rectify it, we do have an obligation to keep grass mowed and, and maintained, uh, so we don't, you know, we should be a good neighbor to the City of Javas, so I would agree with Commissioner Schilling, so we don't get feedback, negative feedback from the City of Javas, at least hire somebody to keep those two lots mowed, because I would agree, it's not gonna be until at least this fall. Um, and, uh, till we can get that even possibly resolved.
Is there?
The normal mower wouldn't have cut it, it's probably not.
Is, is there, like you said, Lindman, does he do the, does, somebody does that over at the cemetery?
I think he does the cemetery, I'm just not a hundred percent, but I think he does.
Can we contact him and hire him to do that?
I would sure support that.
I, I don't care, like I said.
Or someone.
But now that it's cut, it's gonna be a little easier to manage than what it was, last night was about three feet, so.
What, uh, once every two weeks type thing?
I would think that's respectable.
Probably as needed.
There is needed.
Just put it as needed.
Sounds like they're gonna be in kind of a wet stretch for a while anyway, but.
Do you need a motion?
No.
Let's say we just see, we can contact.
They're a part-time city guy? He's part-time for the city, but do they have equipment or?
Can always check, just.
I can, I can ask him, I can.
So you wanna?
I would wanna, I'm, I'm the one that knows where they gotta mow anyhow, so I, if it's all right, I'll just, I'll talk to them first and then talk to Johnny and see if, I'll find somebody, and then I'll just report back the next meeting, what I, what I find. All right? Any other new business? Yes?
We did sell that property that the tax deed was taken on, um, about a hundred and eighty days ago, do you remember what the address is? Was it, it's in City of Mowbridge? One fourteen Third Avenue East, it was a, uh, one, and also we did, we got a notice from the City of Mowbridge to Mow, so I just took it to have someone come in and mow it, so rather than having the city come in and mow it, but I think it was sixty-four hundred dollars, so you'll be seeing a deed and a transaction coming through on that for the tax deed, so.
Just didn't we have an agreement with them that we were gonna pass that, some of that property on to some entity in Mowbridge, or that fell plum through?
I just don't know if that was one of the ones that, I think if they wanted that property, they would have probably notified us that they were looking at it, so. But we didn't, uh, get any response or anything like that, but yeah, I did the same thing, just called the police department, said, who does your mowing in the city, and they're like, oh, there's these people, so they just contacted someone for me, and now that it's out of our hands, they're in the process of coming out of our hands, but actually that was a pretty good price for, so I think we'll be able to collect all our taxes, is that right?
No, I was trying to.
You run one of the, right?
Oh, just, um, do you remember how much was the link one on that property that we sold with the tax, uh?
It was not as much as you guys, it was close to four thousand.
Okay, so. But five thousand is, or sixteen, or whatever is pretty good, so.
Uh, does anybody else have anything else, new business? I just have one, one other thing, I, I believe that, that next Tuesday, I think we should, uh, have a special meeting to go over all the budgets and that. Didn't get done this meeting, I think we should do it next week, if that works for everybody. It'll be what, the ninth? Ninth.
July ninth? For the proposed budget?
It was gonna take, it was gonna take a little longer anyhow, we're already at eleven-thirty, so I mean, it, just saying, that's gonna take numerous hours, so. Is that all right with everybody?
Nine o'clock?
Yeah.
Have, have we got any idea what health insurance we're gonna do?
That, that wasn't here yet, so.
I did, I did send an email to Spencer Gosh when I was putting together my budget, and I know I shared it with some of the department heads. He said, uh, it has not been determined, but he said that a good measuring stick would be eighteen percent. So I think most of the department heads put in twenty, um, eighteen to twenty percent on their proposed budgets, but again, he said that's what he is hearing is, but again, that's not a for sure number, but I think that's what most of the department heads put in their, their proposed budgets is, is eighteen or twenty percent, so.
All righty, anything else?
I just wanted to end with something to read. Stab it in the back.
Well, I'll take, I'll take a motion, I'll go into executive session.
I still move.
Got a motion on the floor, I need a second?
I'll second.
Got a second? All in favor, you say aye?
Aye.
Pose, say nay, motion passed.